Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation to be presented by Pittsburgh City Council. Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1437. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Marquis Pouncy of $7,500 to support the City of Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Mounted Unit. Bill Number 1438. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of William J. Miller Jr., Esquire, in an amount not to exceed $21,720.51 for arbitration services rendered in connection with the City of Pittsburgh in FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration Award. Bill Number 1439. Resolution amending Resolution 738 authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller, PC, for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost from $70,000 to $220,000. Bill Number 1440. Resolution further amending Resolution 863 of 2018 effective January 2019 entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by making various adjustments to CDBG and Pago Fund sources and programming for URA and PLI capital projects." Bill Number 1447. Resolution amending Resolution 57 effective January of 2019 entitled, "Resolution Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation." This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Bill Number 1448. Resolution amending Resolution 56 effective January 2019 entitled, "Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational and Administrative Expenses at a Cost Not to Exceed $940,000 so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation." This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Bill Number 1449. Resolution amending Resolution 698 effective October 2018. Resolution providing for the filing of a community development statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a grant in connection with the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program so as to reprogram funds within City Council's office from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation. This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Bill Number 1450. Resolution amending Resolution 597 effective September 2018 entitled, "Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational and Administrative Expenses for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost Not to Exceed $850,000 so as to reprogram funds within City Council from the Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation." This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Bill Number 1451. Resolution amending Resolution 58 effective January of 2019 providing for the filing of a community development statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a grant in connection with the 2015 CDBG program so as to reprogram funds within the City Council office from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services. This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess and Mr. Coghill. Bill Number 1452. Resolution amending Resolution 59 effective January 2019 providing for an agreement with various community organizations for operational and administrative expenses for the benefit of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh, the 2015 CDBG at a cost not to exceed $895,000 so as to reprogram funds within City Council from the Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services. This bill is sponsored by Reverend Burgess and Mr. Coghill. Bill Number 1441. Presented by Mr. Coghill. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement for the support of the City of Pittsburgh's city sports baseball and softball Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1442. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and their Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with Urban Design Volunteers, LLC for services relating to the administration of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Program for a sum not to exceed $191,000 over three years for the payment of the cost thereof. Councilwoman Darlene Harris presents Bill Number 1453. Resolution amending Resolution 103 effective February of 2019. Resolution providing for the filing of a community development statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a grant in connection with the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program so as to transfer funds within City Council from District 1 to Bridge Committee, Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic, Artist Image Resources, and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services. This bill is sponsored by Mrs. Harris and Mr. Coghill. Bill Number 1454. Resolution amending Resolution 102 effective February of 2019 entitled, "Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational and Administrative Expenses for the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost Not to Exceed $735,000 so as to transfer funds within the City Council as follows. District 1 to Bridge Committee, Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic Group, Artist Image Resources, and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services." This bill is sponsored by Mrs. Harris and Mr. Coghill. Mr. Lavelle presents Bill Number 1443. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement with Freedom Indeed, LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones, for continued professional services as a multi-strategy Bill Number 1444. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Peacekeeper Products International in the amount of $29,310.34 for the purchase of equipment for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1445. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and/or the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into all necessary agreements to acquire and secure a right-of-way in temporary construction easement as needed to advance certain remediation work in or around streets run. Bill Number 1446. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution Number 728 of 2018 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light GO grant for Central Business District Signal Improvements and Further Providing for an Agreement Not to Exceed $3,560,565 for this Stated Purpose in Order to Authorize Expenditure of a Local Match Not to Exceed $890,142 Necessary to Obtain Grant Funding." Bill Number 1455. Resolution amending Resolution 52 effective January 2019 entitled, "Amending the Capital Budget and Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Grant in Connection with the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Program so as to Correct a Job Number within City Council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. Bill Number 1456. Resolution amending Resolution 53 of January 2019 entitled, "Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational and Administrative Expenses for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh so as to Correct a Job Number within City Council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. Bill Number 1457. Resolution amending Resolution Number 60 effective January 2019 entitled, "Resolution Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program so as to Issue a Name Change within the City Council Budget, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, to Poise Foundation, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. Bill Number 1458. Resolution amending Resolution 61 effective January of 2019 entitled, "Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational and Administrative Expenses for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost Not to Exceed $825,000 so as to Perform a Name Change within City Council from Stop the Violence Pittsburgh to the Poise Foundation, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, and Mount Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. And Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 1459. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title VI. Conduct Article I. Regulated Actions and Rights by Repealing the Existing Language of Chapter 619, Refuse Collection and Recycling in its entirety and replacing it with the new chapter 619, Municipal Waste and Recycling. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger. That concludes the reading of the legislation for today. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would you...
(laughing).
As the record reflects, Councilwoman Harris has joined us. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask then that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. Our next order of business is proclamations. I'd like to begin with Councilwoman Kell Smith, if I may, followed by Councilman Lavelle.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. Can we have Sheriff Bill Mullen come forward? Come with him. Come with him. Come with him. No, no, no. I'm sorry. I have a total blank. Kevin. (laughing) Sorry. Deputy Sheriff with him, Kevin Kraus. And I just want to say, I know Bill Mullen because he's a resident of District 2, but so I've known him long before he became sheriff, and my family's known him for a very long time. And I don't think that I know anyone in politics that is, has more integrity than Sheriff Mullen. I mean, he's just above the fray. I remember when he was first running for office, we were talking to Pete Wagner, and Pete Wagner said, he was so nervous, and he said, "I don't know why he's nervous, he hates politics." But to be honest with you, that made me like him even more. So (laughing) so I think it was a great thing, and I just think he's doing amazing work, and we're so proud of him, and we're very proud that he's a District 2 resident of Whereas, on February 10th, 2019, Sheriff William P. Mullen of Banksville celebrated 50 years in law enforcement. And whereas, Mr. Mullen joined the Pittsburgh Police Bureau on February 10th, 1969, where he served 37 years, working his way through the ranks to Narcotics Detective, Homicide Lieutenant, Commander, Assistant Chief of Operations, Assistant Chief of Investigations, and Deputy Chief. As Deputy Chief, he established the cold case squad and a squad for forensic examination of computers. And that was probably way back when, huh? That when computers became an issue. And whereas, after retiring from the city, he assumed the position of Allegheny County Deputy Sheriff in 2006, and the same became the 53rd Sheriff of Allegheny County, elected four terms, currently serving 2017 to 2022. And whereas, as Sheriff, he enhanced the department in many ways, including but not limited to implementing a courthouse emergency response team created for crisis situations in court facilities, enacting strict fiscal controls, enabling the sheriff's office to remain under budget since he has been in office. That alone is a huge accomplishment. Establishing a mortgage conciliation program and foreclosures assistant hotline, reducing mortgage foreclosures by over 2,000 from the year 2006 to the year 2014. And he secured grant funding for suppression operations in local communities infested with gun violence and gang presence and drug activity. And whereas, in addition, he has involved the officers in charity work such as delivering Thanksgiving turkeys to disadvantaged families. Friends and peers describe him as having a tough exterior, a compassionate heart, and an honorable sheriff, and I can attest to that part, who remains humble and leads by example. And whereas, during his tenure with the city, he received numerous commendations for solving serial rape and murder cases, and was recognized by the FBI and the DEA for the solutions of high-profile investigations. As Sheriff, he was heralded as one of the top 50 Irish law enforcement executives by the Irish Echo in New York City. And whereas, Sheriff Mullen likes to enjoy his time with his family, his wife Judy, and if you know her, you'd enjoy time with her too, for over 40 years, and their two sons and their granddaughter. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and congratulate Sheriff William Mullen for 50 years of service, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, to be Sheriff William P. Mullen Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Here, here, may I have a motion in a second, please?
So both.
All in favor?
Aha.
Motion passed. Sheriff, congratulations.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you very much. It's certainly gratifying to get this award, but you know, this is not because of me as much as it's because of the people that I worked for, who showed me the ropes, people who worked for me, and the people I worked with. I've been very fortunate to work with such good people, to learn so many things, and even from some people that really didn't teach good things, I learned some bad things to avoid. But I appreciate my time here in the City of Pittsburgh. I still live in the City of Pittsburgh. I appreciate this award, and I thank you very much.
Like I said, my name's Kevin Kraus. I've worked for Sheriff Mullen since 1993, and I can tell you that I can't think of anybody better to have mentored me through my career, and I want to just say congratulations and thank you for everything you've done, and thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
And I'm just going to add that when Sheriff Mullen would take a photo, he is one of the most humble public servants you'll ever meet, just an all-around good guy, but I really appreciate the help that he's done in terms of mortgage foreclosures, because our area was hit so hard with the mortgage foreclosures, and under his leadership, we were able to stabilize some of our neighborhoods, so I really want to thank him for his work. And I'll be honest with you, anytime there's an issue and someone's going to lose their home, I call him screaming. So (laughing) and he helps us all the time. He doesn't want to see people out of their home, he wants to see a way we can keep people in their homes. So I want to thank him for that work. Any members want to come up and say anything, or take a photo? Join us in the photo?
We have all members for the photograph, please?
Want to say a few words, anybody? Anthony, you want to say a few words? I knew Anthony would say a few words.
So I want to congratulate my friend Billy here. We go back a long, long way, and I got to tell you, he's got a lot of kid in him, too. I was golfing with him one time, and he made a shot from about 300 yards. You ought to have seen this guy. You thought he was a three-year-old kid running around, jumping up and down on the golf course, but Billy and I have a long relationship, and you know, he's a great leader. I knew that about him. And Kevin is as well, a good friend of mine and a good leader, so you know, I know the Sheriff's Department in his good hands with this man, and I'm just happy he's with us, so thanks.
I just want to say that I know Sheriff Mullen for years and years, and he has always been, like, not political, he's been down-to-earth person, and I appreciate all he has done in office. There isn't a time that I call for his help or Kevin's help. They're both there right away on the phone. I don't have to wait, so thank you so much for all you've done for the county.
Both of you.
I don't know, Superintendent Hamlet, you want to join us for the photo? Because I understood that you worked together a little bit. Please, please join us. Do you want to come up too? Yeah, come up, please, Superintendent Hamlet. Superintendent Hamlet's here for another proclamation, but they work together on some issues, so we're going to have him, and join us for the photo. And I am again going to repeat that we're really proud that Sheriff Mullen is a Banksville resident in District 2.
Superintendent Hamlet, might as well come on back up, and if Dr. Cruz and all those here from PPS for Arts in Our Schools Month will please come forward.
The old PPS, sir?
You saying my PPS?
The old PPS.
Oh, the old PPS, yeah. As they gather, I'll simply say as...
As they gather, I'll simply say, as a proud parent of two PPS students, it's always good to, yes, sir. It's always good to have them in our presence and highlight a lot of the good work that is happening in our schools. Whereas, the arts, including dance, music, theater, and visual arts and media, is included in federal state legislation's definition of a well-rounded education. Whereas, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has created arts learning standards and required districts to assess students in the arts to ensure proficiency in the standards. Whereas, learning in and through the arts enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, multiple ways to communicate and convey emotions and ideas, and cross-cultural connections and empathy, which support academic success across the curriculum, as well as personal growth in the classroom and community. Whereas, the arts can transform our schools into havens of creativity and exploration, allow for counter-narratives in order to learn from them, cultivate and empower youth culture, and build upon social justice, identification, and representation. Whereas, the arts provide extensions beyond the classroom to experience a wide variety of artistic opportunities, including showcasing arts learning in public venues, working with professional artists from arts and cultural organizations, and experiencing the real world through field trips. Whereas, the arts require sustenance in order to survive and thrive. Contributions and dedication to arts educators and advocates across the city continue to broaden and strengthen equitable access to arts education for all students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 2019 as Arts in Our Schools Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. So I would like to thank Councilman Lavelle and the other council members, and so we are honored to receive this proclamation again for the second year. The arts are alive and well in Pittsburgh Public Schools. Arts Education is, PPS supports the district's mission to prepare all children to achieve academic excellence and strengthen character so that they have an opportunity to succeed in all aspects of life. As we celebrate arts in our schools this month, we also kick off our annual All-City Arts Showcase later this month. We are constantly reevaluating arts programs to provide our students with more opportunities. We are planning, we're in the planning stages of reviving our legacy Saturday Centers program for our students. So thank you again, and continue to support the arts. We appreciate you.
So we're going to ask all the students if you would please say who you are and what school you attend.
Hi, I'm Maya Ziegler, and I attend Carrick High School.
Hi, I'm Heather McIntyre, and I attend Carrick High School.
I'm Cy Clark, and I attend Carrick High School.
I'm Levon Gaze, and I attend Carrick High.
I'm Melanie Arrington, and I attend Carrick High School.
You want to get the teachers, too? The rest of them, yeah. Introduce themselves.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Kimberly Cruz. I serve as the Senior Program Officer for Arts Education for Pittsburgh Public Schools. Again, we are so honored to have this declaration once again this year.
Hi, I'm Nina Unitas. I'm the Coordinator of Visual Arts and Design for Pittsburgh Public Schools.
I'm Aubrey Plush. I'm the Coordinator of Performing Arts for Pittsburgh Public Schools and a proud District Two resident.
Good morning, Susan Lascaut. I am art teacher at Pittsburgh Carrick High School, and I'd just like to thank City Council. You host us every year for our annual Carrick Art Show in the lobby of the City-County Building. So thank you all for that awesome opportunity every year.
Open it up. You going to be in a softer tone?
Madam Clerk, we have one to be read into the record from Councilman Lavelle.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the 2018 retirees for their dedication and commitment to protecting and servicing the people of the City of Pittsburgh, as well as the class of 1968, for their 50 years of membership in the FOP. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, March 8th, 2019, to be FOP Fort Pitt Lodge Number One Retirees Day.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time will have expired. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that our rules of council are clear, that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are at this time, or could at another time come before council. We do not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. May we please have our first speaker? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Council. My name is Andrew Badiato, Point Breeze neighborhood, and I attend Covenant Fellowship Reform Presbyterian Church. We residents of the City of Pittsburgh, PA, are distressed by the ongoing injustice in our city. The Fourteenth Amendment says, quote, "Nor shall any state deprive any person of life," end quote. Every week in our city, dozens, if not hundreds, of children are being deprived of life. They're being murdered in the act of abortion. An unborn child is not simply an extension of his mother's body. He is a biologically distinct living human being with unique DNA from his parents. Section 29.31 of PA state law agrees with this, defining an unborn child as, quote, "a human being from fertilization until birth and includes a fetus," end quote. And then that same section defines abortion, quote, "abortion, the use of any means to terminate the clinically diagnosable pregnancy of a woman with knowledge that the termination by those means will, with reasonable likelihood, cause the death of an unborn child," end quote. This is in our law. Abortion causes the death of an unborn child who is defined as a human being. Like every other human being, unborn children ought to have their right to life protected. These unjust abortion laws are unconstitutional, and more importantly, they are contrary to God's law, to which we are all held accountable, we pray, we said, under God in our pledge of allegiance. Psalm 139 says, "God forms our inward parts and knits us together in our mother's womb." Every unborn child is made precious by God and bears His image. God also says, "You shall not murder." Ending the life of a child in the womb is murder. God will judge with eternal punishment all murderers and those who promote murder. Your Creator hates the shedding of innocent blood, and this is exactly what is happening in our city. As governing authorities appointed by God, you are responsible before Him to uphold justice and protect your citizens, especially those most helpless and without a voice. Your authority is not autonomous or unconditional, but is delegated from God, who holds all authority. Therefore, we residents of Pittsburgh call you to action. Number one, God has been loving and gracious to us, forgiving us our sins. We extend this grace to you by calling you to personally repent of your sins and put your faith in Jesus, who died for sins and rose from the grave. Number two, resist your higher magistrates when they impose unjust laws that promote the murder of children. Number three, finally, propose legislation that would outlaw this murderous crime and instead institute laws that honor your King Jesus. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this morning. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Caleb Falbo. I am a resident of Sharpsburg, and I'm a member of Christ Church at Grove Farm and the leader of a ministry through Christ Church known as Advocates for Life. I have great respect for the offices which each of you hold, as I am firmly convinced that God has raised you up to the positions that you hold in order to protect us. Today, I would like to address an issue of grave concern that is directly relevant to our beloved city of Pittsburgh, that is the issue of protecting the lives of the unborn. Now immediately when I say this, I am aware that this issue has been addressed at higher levels up to and including the federal level. Therefore, I would like to make clear what it is that I am proposing today. I believe firmly in the responsibility of lesser magistrates to interpose against higher levels of government in cases in which higher levels of government would subject members of a local jurisdiction to matters of injustice. This principle is not without precedent, even in our very own city of Pittsburgh. Back in late 2016 through early 2017, Mayor Bill Peduto and many of the members of this city council sought to make Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for refugees in order to, in a quote from Mayor Peduto, "show everyone the respect and compassion they deserve," close quote. What I am proposing today is that we make Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for the precious lives of unborn babies, in accordance with this display of respect and compassion for all. Within our very own cities, babies are being torn limb from limb, placed on tables, and then pieced together to ensure that the whole baby is removed from the womb. This is absolutely heinous and needs to be ended. Earlier, I mentioned that I respect each of your offices. I learned this from my Savior, Jesus Christ. When the Pharisees asked Him, "Is it lawful to pay taxes to Caesar?" Jesus, after having been brought a coin, answered by asking a question, "Whose image is inscribed on the coin?" When they replied that it was Caesar's, He said to them, "Therefore render to Caesar the things that are Caesar's and to God the things that are God's." His answer implied another question that has been central to the Christian view of humanity for all of history. That implied question is this, "Whose image is inscribed upon your life?" As leaders of this city, I call upon you to act swiftly in accordance with the one whose image is inscribed upon your life. I call upon you to end abortion in Pittsburgh, and I close with this question, "Whose image is inscribed upon the voiceless lives of babies in the womb, and are they not worthy of the protection of those of us who have voices?" Thank you.
May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Emma Blummer. I live in Westwood, and I am a concerned citizen, as well as a mom to my three beautiful children who are with me, and with my friends as well and their children. And I'll keep it pretty brief. I think we can look back on history and wonder, how did the Holocaust happen? We can wonder, how were people able to kill other people so callously? And I think the answer is, they didn't think that they were people. They were able to say, like, they might look human, and they might seem human, but they're less human than us. And I believe that is how our culture, our country, even our world, looks at the unborn child, that they are, they're just not people. But as, as a person who can see self-evident scientific reality, as well as a mother who has born three children, the unborn are human beings who are deserving of protection. And I'll close with this, when I have conversations with my children about hard topics, because already as a parent, I've decided to just go ahead and be very honest with them and try to help shepherd them along, dealing with hard things. When we talked about abortion, my four-year-old son said, "That is not nice." And I think it's pretty simple, pretty easy to see. Abortion is not nice, and it needs to end. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here this morning. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning.
Good morning. I am, sorry. I am a member of the Anti-War Committee of the Thomas Merton Center.
We just need your name, please, and where you reside.
Nora Lowman. And Thomas Merton Center is in Garfield.
Thank you.
And it's just to tell you that the mayor told us when he was running for office that he would have the report made that we asked for, and the report is, we are allowed to have it, it is provided for in the Home Rule Charter to tell us the effect of the military on the city of Pittsburgh. Other people in my group have asked him, and he said, yes, he would do it. And then there have been two different people assigned this job, and it's never been printed. And we're asking you now to see that it be done, and thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. May we have our next speaker? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Hill District. First, my granddaughter goes to Malines Propel up in the Hill District, and she's pretty good in school. She draws good, she likes school, and she was telling me that she had to do an interview with the lunch program, the employee. She was talking about, they were asking about the food, and she also asked why they provide milk, they don't provide water. Now, if you, you might not know, but black people or people of color, even I know the African, the child that came from Africa couldn't tolerate milk. She's asking why we don't have water, and she said the lady wouldn't answer. Well, I asked the superintendent, and I'm going to call and see why. Also, I have to say this before, the mayor takes and makes disagreement for these cars. They're supposed to be on the street. He wasn't in town, and mayor, you need to know that those windows are black, almost dark, you can't see who's driving those cars. So the first thing before you do that, you got to make sure you be able to see in there. Because like I said, when my nephew, the one that ended up dead, because his windows were dark, the police stopped him and arrested him, on other stuff too, but not, the main thing was the windows. You can't really see through it. How the police going to know? But yet the mayor done said they're going to come here. Also, the mayor, I want you to follow through what you said you were going to do as far as making an appointment about my son. His father is in town. Forty-three years he's been away. He wants to know what happened to his son, Anthony C. Johnson. Okay? And then I want to say this, I have to say this. This has bothered me, because there's times you did not let me speak, and I was in the room more than once. I was not able to speak, but I must bring this out. I worry about Connie Parker and her daughter, Tawanda. And I need to put this out. Tawanda went to jail, and I'm speaking for the mother. Tawanda went to jail, and who should have went to jail was Valerie McDonald. The reason why I say that, Valerie okayed that man. She said, I remember, she said his name, "Johnson, well qualified." Because if Miss Carlisle had tried to bring her husband, her mother's man's name up to give him a job, it would have been done. So all the ones that were counsel are at fault that this woman went to jail. And you praising Valerie, good riddance. When we had a pregnant woman in here, she did not work with the pregnant woman. But when we had the Mexicans or the foreign people, she was, they were her little chicks. Do you understand that you praising her, good riddance? Same way as Costa. Costa, he better pay that $12,000 or $14,000. Remember, he tried to get, get out money before he leaves, please.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please. Okay, Dr. Miller, good morning.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Beltsover and Lawrenceville, Global Intelligence Society candidates for president 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. Skin, bi-mins, and anti-whitening N-Pop. Skin, by men's, an anti-whitening N-Pop song. Nigeria, an oil-laden U.S. ally, is a democracy. Oil-heavy Saudi Arabia is not. Akula, Tamajalisa, not Bernie, Yara, ne. That's Haiza. Right, Mr. Kraus? Mr. Lovell? Mr. Burgess? Or maybe that's profanity to you. Ms. Gross, will you provide Pittsburgh a comprehensive list of your activities with individuals and institutions while District Seven representative for the education and protection of children? Ms. Gross, do you know, 1989 to 2019, how many children in Lawrenceville and District Seven overall were sexually abused by Roman Catholic priests? Don't know? Have you visited them? They are bleeding. On 12 February 2019, I challenged you and this council your refusal to publicly condemn the sexual abuse of Pittsburgh children by Roman Catholic authority figures, not the mass of people who are Roman Catholics, who are really upset about this. What should you do? What should a non-Christian or follower of the Christian religion, a member of the Church Catholic Universal, a Lutheran Catholic, Baptist Catholic, Roman Catholic do? Don't know? I protest this. Gina Gina Rastanhankali, it is your Jobian public officer duty and ours to speak out against those who abuse the children, to relentlessly pursue and prosecute the abusers, and to rhetorically pulverize this abuse. It is your job as District Seven representative to speak for the children, as it is true for all of you, and you have not. Last month, instead, you allowed you arrange children to speak for you, I think to cover your ethical governmental incapacity to speak for the children. You had 50 kids come up here and say the Pledge of Allegiance. But what you didn't do was say that in February of 2019, there was a kid in Florida who was arrested in relationship to his refusal to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag because he thinks that the local and national government is racist. That is on you. Gina Gina Kunya on you.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Okay, may we, may we have our next speaker, please? Are there any further speakers wishing to address council this morning? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Victoria Curse. I'm the Secretary for the National Association of Women in Construction. We were supposed to receive a proclamation from Teresa Kell Smith and we were skipped. Yeah, I have no idea. So we have a confirmation from Lori Maribello that it would be ready for today. It's Women in Construction Week. It's celebrated across the country.
So, if I may, please, will you stay with us just a moment? We'll continue with the meeting. Let's see if we can correct the situation. And councilwoman will report back shortly, okay? Thank you. Okay, let me then proceed with closing of public comment and begin with presentation of papers. We'll begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1437, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Marquis Pouncy of $7,500 to support the City Bureau of Police Mounted Unit. Bill Number 1438, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of William J. Miller Jr. in an Amount Not to Exceed $21,720.51 for Arbitration Services rendered in Connection with the City of Pittsburgh FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration Award. Bill Number 1439, Resolution Amending Resolution 738, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost from $70,000 to $220,000. Bill Number 1440, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget, 2019 CDBG Program, and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by making various adjustments to CDBG and Paygo Fund sources and programming for URA and PLI capital projects. Bill Number 1447, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 57, so as to reprogram funds within city council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation $11,000. Bill Number 1448, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 56, so as to reprogram funds within city council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation $11,000. Bill Number 1449, Resolution Amending Resolution 698, so as to reprogram funds within city council's office from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation $8,500. Bill Number 1450, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 597, so as to reprogram funds within city council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation $8,500. Bill Number 1451, Resolution Amending Number 58, so as to reprogram funds within the city council office from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor $3,000 to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services $3,000. Bill Number 1452, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 59, so as to reprogram funds within city council from Eastside Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services $3,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1441, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to Enter Into a Sponsorship Agreement for the Support of the City of Pittsburgh City Sports Baseball and Softball Teams.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1442, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Urban Design Ventures LLC for Services Relating to the Administration of the City's Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, Programs for a Sum Not to Exceed $191,000 Over Three Years and for the Payment of Costs Thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1453, Resolution Amending Resolution 103, as to Transfer Funds Within City Council from District One to Bridge Committee, Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic Group, Art Image Resources, and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services $5,000. Bill Number 1454, Resolution Amending Resolution 102, as to Transfer Funds Within the City Council as Followed, District One to Bridge Committee, I'm sorry, $10,000, Allen Place Community Services, Brightwood Civic Group, Art Artist Image Resources, and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services $5,000.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lovell, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Motion to waive Rule A.
I apologize, I don't have that. Where?
This current bill.
We don't have it.
Doesn't matter, we can motion on the floor a second.
Which, which we on?
May I?
The last pertaining to the Beachview Manor?
May I? May I? Thank you. I have nothing up here. What committee? We're under Councilwoman Harris's committee?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a motion? I have nothing marked here. You wish to waive the rules, Councilwoman, on 453 and 454?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you're making the motion, Councilwoman?
It's in my district, I think that's why the councilwoman asked me.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second to waive the rules on 453 and 454. Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Post abstentions. 453, 454 will be added to tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lovell, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Lovell presents Bill Number 1443, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement or agreements with Freedom Indeed LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones for Continued Professional Services as a Multi-Strategy Coordinator. Said Amendment Agreement shall be extended for a period of three months, bringing the overall value of the amended agreement to $135,000 with the previous $120,000 funded from said grant, while the city issues a new RFP for the same services later in 2019. Bill Number 1444, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Peacekeeper Products International in the Amount of $29,310.34 for the Purpose of Equipment for the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Senator Papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1445, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and/or the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into all necessary agreements to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easements as needed to advance certain remediation work in or around streets run. Bill Number 1446, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 728, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Green Light Go Grant for Central Business District Signal Improvements and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $3,560,565 for this stated purpose in order to authorize expenditure of a local match not to exceed $890,142 necessary to obtain grant funding. Bill Number 1455, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 52, so as to Correct a Job Number within city council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation. Bill Number 1456, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 53, so as to Correct a Job Number within city council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation. Bill Number 1457, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 60, so as to Issue a Name Change within city council budget, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, Support Foundation Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, that's $5,000. Bill Number 1458, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 61, so as to Perform a Name Change within city council from Stop the Violence Pittsburgh to Support Foundation Stop the Violence Pittsburgh and Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, $5,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman?
Yes, sorry. Councilwoman Smith pointed this out to me. And I do have to motion to waive the rules on 1445. This is about streets run. And the Department of Mobility is planning on going in to do work there in the creek in the next two weeks. So if we could waive the rules on that to get that process moved.
Councilwoman? Great, thank you. Should we have a motion in a second?
Thank you.
Do we have discussion? Then seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Post abstentions? Thank you, Councilman. 1445 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburgers presents Bill Number 1459, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VI, Conduct Article I, Regulated Actions and Rights by Repealing the Existing Language of Chapter 619, Refuse Collection and Recycling in Its Entirety and Replacing it with a New Chapter 619, Municipal Waste and Recycling to Streamline Municipal Waste and Recycling Practices in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes presentation of papers. Councilwoman Kell Smith, can I bring you up for your proclamation now? Thank you. Come on, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize that this was delayed. This proclamation was delayed.
We all up there?
But it's the Women's Caucus presenting the proclamation.
You go.
It's the Women's Caucus presenting. I would say it's the Women's Caucus presenting the proclamation because we are so extremely proud to do so for this worthwhile union. And I would just say that we are very, we have really great male colleagues that also really support. So we'll bring you all up after because we also know how, how much you support women in the trades and construction industry.
I'm in construction.
In construction, pardon me?
I said, I'm in construction.
You're in construction, right. But we want it done right, so we called the women in. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh, as well as the region of Western Pennsylvania, continues to strive for higher levels of construction and development growth. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh is committed to reaffirming the goals of fair opportunities for women and minorities in the construction industry. And whereas the National Association of Women in Construction is a nonprofit and international organization that promotes and supports the advancement and employment of women in construction, women in construction industry. And whereas the National Association of Women in Construction was founded in 1955 in Texas, now serves approximately 5,500 members in 190 chapters in the United States and Canada, as well as affiliates in Australia, New Zealand, and South Africa. And whereas the Pittsburgh Area Chapter 161 was first chartered on March 29, 1969, with 33 founding members, and now includes women who are actively employed in all aspects of the construction industry, such as business owners, managers, consultants, tradeswomen, operators, architects, accountants, and attorneys. And whereas during the week of March 3 through the 9, 2019, the National Association of Women in Construction chapters throughout the United States and Canada will be holding special events to celebrate the annual Women in Construction Week. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh wishes to recognize and commend the women who participate in the construction industry throughout our region. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of March 3 through the 9, 2019 to be Women in Construction Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thanks, Councilwoman. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you and congratulations.
Let me just again, thank you for your work. Thank you for all you're doing for women in the region and across this country and obviously beyond. We're gonna give you a few minutes to say a few words and the Women's Caucus say a few comments, make a few comments. And then we're gonna call our male colleagues up because we know how supportive you are as well.
Hi, I'm Deborah Pitchman, President of the Pittsburgh Chapter. Our chapter is celebrating 50 years this year. I'm a CPA owner of Kay Sabatini. And we're very grateful to get this proclamation and we're just continuing to grow our chapter. Our chapter started out two years ago with 23 members. We're up to 37, so we see a lot of growth potential. And with the labor industry need for women in construction, this is gonna be a good chapter to join. So thank you again for the proclamation.
Great.
Thank you, Council, for sponsoring the proclamation. I think that we all are very well aware of the need for skilled trade workers, especially in our region, but across the country. And what's especially interesting about the construction industry, and I work with Deborah at a CPA firm, I'm not a tradeswoman. But you know, women make up just over 9% of the people who are employed in the construction industry in the United States. But the wage gap is the smallest between men and women. It's about 90% of what a man makes is what a woman makes in construction, which is even more reason. a woman makes in construction, which is even more reason to, you know, support women who are involved in the trades and in marriage shop construction as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Women's Caucus, I want to thank you for being here and being so supportive of the trade unions. Thank you very much.
May we have remaining members for the photograph, please? Okay. May we? Okay. All members, please.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Okay. Councilwoman, thank you. That takes us into unfinished business. Madam Clerk, unfinished business, please. You?
Council President presents Bill Number 1382, Resolution Appointing Dr. Shanna Tharp-Gillam as a member of the Board of Directors of Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a term to expire on March 26, 2020. This seat was previously filled by Greg Jones.
Thank you. An interview was held last Wednesday, February 27. May I have a motion to approve, please?
To move.
A second. We have discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions. Thank you very much. 1382 passes. Our next order of business then will be reports of committee for final action. We begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1431, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1396, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program Items A through H, 2022 Fifth, 576 Blessings, 526 Lincoln D, 6623 Shetland, Zero Hazelwood, 737 Industry, 321 Cedarhurst, and Zero California. Bill Number 1397, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Items A through L, 504 and 506 Lowell, 6513, 6501, 6503, 6507 Meadow, 6827 Fifth, 27 Tuscan, Tecunsa, 511 Lio, Zero Letty Hill, 3821 Wilkesboro, 1617, and Zero Brownsville. Bill Number 1398, Resolution Repelling Item and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, Which Authorizes Sale of Property in Various Ward to the City Due to the Incompletion of Sale, Item A and B, 515 Lowell and 17 Curtain. Bill Number 1399, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Petitions for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired at Tax Sale to the City of Pittsburgh Base Community Development Corporation for the Purpose of Advancing the Interests of the Community Through Redevelopment Items A and B, 846 East Ohio and 302 West Burgess.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under Finance and Law. Do we have discussion on any of the bills as presented? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chair is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1432, Report to the Committee on Public Safety Services for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1401, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into an Agreement with the National Association of State Boating Law Administrators for the Training and Certification Services Regarding Public Safety Boat Operations at a Sum Not to Exceed $360,000 and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill. Under our Committee on Public Safety Services, do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Theresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1433, Report to the Committee on Public Works for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1406, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Fundings from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Construct Streetscape Updates to Walnut Street in the Shadyside Neighborhoods Business District. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1407, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Spruce Way Situated in the Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 1408, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Expand and Redevelop Homewood Park. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1409, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works for Grant Fundings for the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1410, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works of the City to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Replace the Robert E. Williams Community Center in the Event the Grant is Awarded. This resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 11411, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the South Side Park. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1412, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate Stevens School in Council District Two. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $250,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? I would only add, if I may, that Bill 1411, calling for a match to a grant for work to be done in South Side Park, I just want to recognize Mayor Perdido and this administration, as well as the friends of South Side Park for this amazing cooperation between organizations, including Senator Costa and State Representative Harry Reedshaw, to make major investments over the next couple of years in South Side Park, and it's been a wonderful collaborative effort, and I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to be involved. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
And I'll just congratulate you for all the work that you do and that you put into this, because I think everyone knows how you advocate so strongly for your district.
Thanks, Councilwoman. That was very kind of you. Thank you. Okay. Without further discussion then, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Human Resources. Our Chair is Councilwoman Darlene Harris. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1434, Report to the Committee on Human Resources for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1400, Resolution Providing that the City enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with the Civil Service and MPOETC, Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates, and Providing for a Payment of the Costs Thereof not to exceed $160,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Human Resources. Is there further discussion on either of the bills? On the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. Next, our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1435, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1008, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article I, by changing from R1AH Residential Single Unit Attached High Density District to LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial District, Certain Property Roughly Bound About Laramore Avenue, Maxwell Way, Stotner Way, and Meadow Street, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 12th Ward.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1436, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for February 27, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1395, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Pittsburgh Code Title I, Administrative Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authority by Effective Date to Update Purposes, Meeting Rules, Membership Activities, and Remove the Requirement That the Commission Be Re-Authorized. Bill Number 1402, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into a Corporation Agreement with the Alliance for Infants and Toddlers for the Shared Operation and Administration of the City of Pittsburgh City Care Quality Fund for a Period of Two Years from the Opening of the Fund in an Amount Not to Exceed $2 Million for the Payment of the Costs Thereof. Bill Number 1403, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for UPMC Mercy Vision and Rehabilitation Hospital at UPMC Mercy. Bill Number 1404, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Grace Street Residence at the Intersection of Grace Street and Main Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bills? Then seeing none, bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye on all bills and abstain on Bill 1403.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Crowes, President.
Aye.
On Bill 1403, eyes eight, one abstention. All other bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. The Chair has one brief meeting announcement. Excuse me, please. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 6, at 1:30 p.m., Council will be hosting a cablecast public hearing as it relates to Bill 1353, which is amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code, creating Title 13 Storm Water Management. Do we have anything else further from members? Then with nothing else, may I please have a motion to approve our minutes and adjourn our meeting?
To move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.